Okay, Mrs. Downing, now you're on.
I could hear you, yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are going to resume the meeting. This meeting is being conducted virtually because a majority of the Board of Education felt that it was important to conduct business in a timely manner, while at the same time giving due consideration to individual strong feelings opposing the mask mandate. As the district has a legal obligation to comply with Executive Order 251, conducting this meeting virtually enables the board to do its work and to conduct our necessary business to operate. We are hoping to have the in-person meeting in November. At this time, we will transition to the student representatives. Mason Hack, would you like to give your report, please?
Hello, I'm Mason Hack. I'm the student class president for the seniors. So we are currently planning homecoming. The homecoming football game is Friday, October 22nd versus Central. The homecoming court will be announced during halftime. The dance is Saturday, October 23rd from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the senior parking lot. We have tents, a dance floor, a DJ, and the event is catered by Fuchillas. And the next SGA meeting will be Monday, November 8th at 1:45 p.m.
Thank you very much, Mason. Next, we have Alexis Frezey.
Hi, I will be presenting the Unsung Hero Award for the month of October. Sarah Festa has always been a wonderful person to be around. Her positivity radiates throughout the classroom as well as outside of school. Sarah is a dedicated student who continues to strive for success and is always willing to learn in the classroom. She puts in so much time and effort in her schoolwork while balancing her advanced placement classes and honors classes, extracurricular activities, and work. Sarah always has a smile on her face and is always there for her peers. Her positive outlook on everything influences others tremendously. Sarah Festa is a dedicated National Honor Society member who always puts her time into volunteering as well as helping her community for the better. In addition to all of her successes, Sarah is someone who everyone knows to be a genuine, kind-hearted person. She is someone that can always be counted on and is always there to lend a helping hand to anyone, no matter who they are. Sarah is one of the most respectful, caring, and talented students this school has. She is a friend to many people throughout the school, and everyone knows how great of a person she is. Sarah is one of the most selfless people and inspires many through her noble actions. For these reasons and many more, Sarah Festa has been chosen for the Unsung Hero Award for the month of October. Congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you very much, Alexis. And both of you, thank you for coming on, and we're hoping to see you in person in November. And we understand if you have homework to do. And we're more than welcome to stay on, but if you have homework, we understand. Thank you both. You're welcome. Thanks, guys. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will have the report of the superintendent. Dr. Clark?
Thank you, Board President McAvoy, and welcome to the October Board Meeting. And I'm going to reiterate what Mrs. McAvoy just said. Thank you so much, Mason and Alexis, for joining us live. We really look forward to working with both of you throughout the school year and, of course, in person. And a big congratulations to our Matthew Blom Unsung Hero Sarah Festa. So congratulations, Sarah, and her family. Very, very much deserved. As I normally do, I want everyone to take note of this month's Board Agenda cover and the superintendent's report cover and the artwork there. The Board Agenda was designed by Annika Eckloff. She is a senior at Lacey Township High School. And the artist for the superintendent's report is Abigail Stone, also a 12th grader senior at Lacey Township High School. Again, and I say it every month, I encourage visitors to come over to the Board Office and take a look at all of the artwork that's hanging here. It just truly looks amazing. So thank you, Annika, and thank you, Abigail. All right, so I know that despite the beautiful weather we're having, summer is almost in our rearview mirrors, sadly. But something I haven't done yet is to recognize our summer reading winners. This past summer, our students participated in the Summer Reading Navy Paw Awards, and each of our winners received a $25 Barnes &amp; Noble gift card, and they were eligible to win an Amazon Fire tablet, and we gave away six of those. These students logged over 32 hours of reading each. And we created a video to congratulate all 37 of them. So I encourage you to take a look. The video can be found on our website under the WLTS YouTube page. It's about 13 minutes long. And it's adorable, and you can see who all of the recipients are, and you can also see the recipients of the Amazon Fire tablets as well. So kudos to them. And I hope to have them back at an in-person meeting, so we perhaps can recognize all of them. All right, shifting gears for a moment. Last year, we started the Lacey Township School District Parent University, and we had several sessions, albeit they were virtual. But I am happy to announce that we will continue to offer parent universities throughout the school year. So our very first one is scheduled for Wednesday, October 27th. And what we've done is turned it into a community event called the Lacey Township School District Red Ribbon Community Resource Event. It's going to take place in the Lacey Township High School parking lot from 4:30 to 6:30, and given that it's so close to Halloween, we've combined it with a trunk or treat for the kids to enjoy. So we are looking for volunteers to decorate their trunks and pass out candy that night. So if you're available, please fill out the registration form that is available on our website. Mr. Lidle is going to navigate the website to show everybody where that is. So you're going to start on the district homepage. You're going to hover over Students and Families. You're going to go down to Parent University, click on the link for the flyer, which Mr. Lidle is doing right now. And there's the flyer, and there's the registration form, and it gives a little bit more information and talks a little bit about who will be there that night. Alternatively, you can click on the slide for the event as well. So Mr. Lidle is going to go back to our homepage. And there's the flyer slide, and if you click on it, it takes you to the exact place where he just was. So two ways to get there. So you can get there from the district homepage as well as each of the schools' webpages as well. Thank you, Mr. Lidle. I appreciate you doing that. All right, I'm going to turn the microphone briefly over to Mr. Zalinski to do our annual New Jersey Department of Education School Self-Assessment for HIB grades, HIB standing for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Mr. Zalinski.
So if Mr. Lidle would entertain us for a second, he will show us where to find these. If you go under Students and Families and you scroll down to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and you click on that, that'll show you a landing page, and there's actually a HIB report that is issued by the state of New Jersey. It is based on a self-assessment that we give. It's always a year behind. It's in the 1920 school year. 2021 is being completed right now, and then that gets posted usually around January. Feel free to go here and look at it. A perfect score is 78. We generally score between a 73 and a 75 for each of our buildings. And then overall, the district receives a 73 as a grade. Why it's not 100, that everybody understands, I don't know. But that is how the state of New Jersey operates when they give you points in each of the categories. So we report out on that. It is a self-reporting. It is reporting that we are paying attention to how we are conducting our HIBs. We pay attention to our training, and we pay attention to the people that you have to deal with if ever it comes up that you have to deal with an incident of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So that's brief, but it is a requirement, and we have now reported it. So thank you, Dr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. And as Mr. Zalinski said, throughout the school year, as we work on various trainings and presentations for our students, we report that out in a system to the Department of Education twice a year. We do it in December or January, and then we do it again at the end of the school year along with the self-assessments that are conducted by our school safety teams. Excuse me. So thank you, Mr. Zalinski. That information is posted on our website, and we will update it accordingly. All right, and I mentioned earlier, I'm about to turn it over to Mr. Brandis to present our October Seniors of the Month. But obviously, because we are virtual, and like we did last year, we will look for a month where we can bring back our students who weren't able to be recognized in person for an in-person recognition to include October. All right, Mr. Brandis, I'm going to turn it over to you for a presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Thank you to the Board of Education for allowing me to speak at the Board Meetings. And even tonight, we are remote, but again, I do appreciate it. It is one of the best parts of my job as building principal to celebrate the accomplishments of our students, especially our seniors throughout their four years of high school, have done some most remarkable things, and we're so proud of them. So I'd like to congratulate personally on behalf of the high school to Sarah Cousin and Cody Besser as being our October's Seniors of the Month. At this time, you're going to see a video of their accomplishments played by Mr. Lidle and Mr. Merman. I appreciate their assistance in making the videos, and again, congratulations to Cody and Sarah. Good evening. I'm Greg Brandis, Principal of Lacey Township High School, and we're here to celebrate October's Seniors of the Month. I'd first like to congratulate Sarah Cousin. Congratulations, and at this time, we'll watch a video of her accomplishments.
Hi, I'm Sarah Cousin, and I'm proud to be the October Senior of the Month.
Congratulations, Sarah, winning Senior of the Month. What a great accomplishment.
I'm so proud to announce October's Senior of the Month. Congratulations, Sarah Cousin. Well deserved.
At Lacey Township High School, I am a STEM student as well as president of DECA and FBLA, and I'm an avid member of student government.
What separates her is her work ethic. I've seen it in the community. I've seen it in the classroom, the presentations that she delivers.
One of the things I could definitely tell you is the fact that I loved having you in class. You're one that was always open, honest, and forthcoming, and I really appreciate that. Through the years, we've been through a lot, especially with presentation skills, overall organization, and time management. But you've always taken everything we've ever done in stride and added it to your overall resume. And I can tell you, from experience, it's going to take you far.
After high school, I have plans of going to a four-year college for business and major in finance.
A memory that really stands out for me with Sarah dates back to definitely over a decade ago. I was the greeter as my duty for the front door by the main office, and it was around the time where Sarah would come in for preschool. And I didn't know her by Sarah Cousin. I just knew her by this little girl that would come in with the biggest smile, always say hi, best manners. And the best part about it was she always had a different hat on, and I just, I loved it about her. And then I find out she's Sarah Cousin, and you know, over 10 years later, seeing her, you know, grown into such a beautiful young lady, still with those manners and still with that bright smile.
Outside of school, I work in the Township Office as a finance position, and I work at a ski resort in Vermont.
Congratulations again to Sarah Cousin for winning October Senior of the Month. I am beyond proud of you.
Sarah, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we want to present you with this plaque for being October Senior of the Month. We're so impressed with all the activities that you do at the high school, all the sports you're involved with, and the overall wonderful person you are. We wish you so much success in college, and we're looking forward to presenting you this plaque in person in the near future. Congratulations, and enjoy the rest of your senior year.
Good evening. We're back here to celebrate October's Seniors of the Month. At this time, I would like to congratulate Cody Besser. Congratulations, Cody, and at this time, we'll watch a video of his accomplishments.
Hi, my name is Cody Besser, and I'm proud to be October Senior of the Month.
Congratulations, Cody, winning Senior of the Month. What a great accomplishment. Another one to add to the resume. You were a talented student and athlete. You were a pleasure to have in class every single year. Unfortunately, I don't get to have you this year, but I love the fact that we still get to interact every single morning.
Congratulations, Cody, on being named October Senior of the Month. Cody is well deserving this recognition as he is a tremendous student-athlete as well as a positive role model amongst his peers. He has been a key member of the boys' soccer team in the past four years, including captaining this year's undefeated B-South championship team.
After high school, I'm going to go to a four-year school and study physical education.
You're hardworking, dedicated, you're perseverate, and most of all, you're a forward thinker. A great example of that is the Year 2100 project that we did last year, where you decided to make this drone to go. And you created a project where it was supposed to be able to deliver goods and anything else, anybody who wanted it within a certain radius. It's that kind of thinking that's really going to take you far.
I'm a part of the Surf Rider Club and play soccer.
I will always remember all the summer practices Cody tried to get me to end early because there was epic waves and he needed to go surf. Cody currently has several offers to continue his academic and soccer career at the next level.
Outside of school, I'm part of Rely for Life and do all Nebraska Cancer Walks.
So once again, Cody, congratulations on winning Senior of the Month.
We wish him all the best in his future endeavors. It's been an honor to get to coach you and watch you grow as a young man. We're very excited for your future, and we just want to say congratulations.
Cody, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we want to congratulate you for becoming October Senior of the Month. Your resume was quite impressive, all your volunteerism, your four-letter awards for soccer, and your Player of the Week, and we wish you so much success as you study exercise science in college. And we're looking forward to presenting you this plaque in person in the near future. Once again, congratulations.
Excellent. A little windy out there, Mrs. McAvoy, huh? Congratulations, Sarah and Cody. And again, I'm going to reiterate what Mrs. McAvoy just said. We hope to have you in person so we can present your plaques to you in person. So we'll let you know when that's going to be. All right, another trend, and I want to say also, congratulations to Sarah and Cody's parents because we know that these accomplishments don't happen unilaterally. Parents and teachers play a huge role. So congratulations to the families as well. So we'll have you back to join us in person. All right, another tradition that we started a while back is Staff Member of the Month. And while we didn't have the opportunity to get that going for September, we did for October. So our committee convened to review all of the nominations, and I am happy to announce that our two staff members of the month for October are Karen Knapp, who's a paraprofessional at Mill Pond School, and Katerina Orico, who works in the Food Services Department at Lacey Township High School. And again, because we're not in person, we're going to go to the video. So, Mr. Lidle, are you ready for us?
Everyone, welcome to Mill Pond. We have some very exciting news. We are about to go into a classroom and surprise one of our amazing staff members who was identified as Staff Member of the Month here in Lacey Township. So her name is Mrs. Knapp. She's one of our paraprofessionals, and she's awesome. Let's go surprise her. Hi, how are you, Mr. Ruben?
Good, good.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Hi.
So we have some very, very exciting news for your classroom. Mrs. Knapp was identified as one of our staff members of the month for all of Lacey Township. Can we give her a big round of applause?
That's so sweet.
Translation's good.
Oh, my gosh.
We are so excited for you. We can't thank you enough for all that you do.
It's the first time I've ever been recognized in Lacey Township.
Oh, well deserved, well deserved. You've done an amazing job, and we are so proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for what we do.
Let's give her another round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you. I love working here.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Debbie Rittner, fifth-grade teacher at Mill Pond, and I'm so excited that Mrs. Karen Knapp is our Staff Member of the Month. She works so hard in this place. She's running around like a nut, wearing every different hat anybody ever asks her to wear. She's always there to lend a hand, anything that is needed. She helps ease the chaos, especially at dismissal and at the beginning of the day. I'm so proud of her and so happy for her that she was recognized. Congratulations, Karen. Very well deserved.
Ladies and gentlemen, come over to the front of the cafeteria. Ladies and gentlemen, come over real quick. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We just finished your work. Let me clean a little bit.
No, it's okay. It's okay. As you may know, the district celebrates Faculty Members of the Month throughout the entire schools, and we're here to celebrate October's Faculty Member of the Month. Maria, congratulations. Mr. Rainbow nominated you, and we're celebrating you amongst your peers as voting you Faculty Member of the Month for the district. So congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, my God. This has never happened to me.
Yeah, for all your years of service here, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations, Maria. And thank you for nominating her, Joe, and thank you for all of you and all you do here for our students.
Maria, as everybody knows, Maria from the deli. Her name is Concheto Orico. She's been part of the Lacey School District for over 30 years. She's one of the hardest-working women I ever worked with. She does more than, goes way above and beyond all she can do. Like I said in my write-up about her, one day her car broke, and she walked to work to make sure everybody could get a sandwich. It's dedication like that's hard to find nowadays. She's an amazing woman.
And I'm going to concur. So congratulations, Katerina, Maria, goes by lots of names, and congratulations to Karen. Well, well deserved. I thoroughly enjoy recognizing our staff members of the month, and I'm so glad that we were able to introduce it. And we look forward to the rest of the school year and see who else gets recognized. All right, and so it's also been quite a while since we've produced a Lacey Minute. And, you know, as we continue our path to normalcy, we brought it back for the first time since last February, which seems like eons ago. So I want to thank Mr. Merman and his students for tonight's version. It's fantastic. And, Mr. Lidle, we are ready.
Coach Lou Versillo, to a man who has dedicated his life for this program, who has suffered many heartbreaking losses and thrilling victories, through turning just players into phenoms and making his paw prints stamped here and loved by the fans and the town, Coach Lou Versillo is a part of forever.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lidle. Great job, Mr. Merman, and please extend that compliment to your students as well. So we're going to continue that tradition for the remainder of the school year. So once again, I am going to implore our staff members to submit materials to Mr. Merman. He has provided the email to all of you, and he can't produce them without the material. So please make sure to share all the good news that's going on in the Lacey Township School District so that we can feature it in the Lacey Minute. By the way, our Lacey Minute does get posted to our website on the right-hand side of the district homepage, and it's going to be really good to see that February get replaced with the current one. So kudos. Thank you, Mr. Merman. All right, I am now going to turn it over to our Business Administrator, Mr. Patrick DeGeorge, to present the school budget, Part Two. Mr. DeGeorge.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening, everyone. This is typically where people either leave the lecture hall or turn off their computers, so just give everybody a second. So before we get into Part Two, let's do a quick review, Mr. Lidle, of Part One, right from last month. So we talked about the budget being on a schedule, just like every other single thing in public education, and it's a 12-month process. It just doesn't happen overnight. We've talked about terms such as plan, appropriation, what an encumbrance, an expenditure, and what revenue really means. We said that the budget process, not to oversimplify it, really happened in three major steps. The first is to estimate what our total revenue we're going to get in the school year is. Second is to estimate or develop a spending plan on what we're going to spend the money on. And step three, of course, is to balance revenues and appropriations, which really is the most difficult and challenging part. And as with everything else that we do, the Board does have a major role in understanding how the district operates, understanding the process of budgeting, establishing the goals, and we'll talk about some of those a little later during the resolutions. We give them updates throughout the process. They do offer comments and questions, which are meaningful, and they review preliminary and the final budgets. Mr. Lidle, please, and then you can skip to the next. So now we're going to talk about managing the budget because that's the bulk of the time we spend in a year. Ongoing oversight. Every day, there is a daily purchasing review. There are monthly reviews such as line item transfers. You see those on every agenda, monthly list of bills, and the 1701 reporting, which you also see on every single agenda. The cash flow analysis, which happens every week, and monthly discussions with our budget managers. And then every year, we have the annual audit, and we'll be talking about that in more detail when the auditor comes to our next meeting. Mr. Lidle? So let's delve into some of the ongoing oversight. The purchasing review. As with everything you see from us, there's always, begins with a law or a rule or a citation that tells us what we need to do and helps guide us in accomplishing those things. New Jersey Public Purchasing Law is by far, in a way, NJSA 18A18A1 is the law regarding procurement or purchasing. There are also local public school contracts law, which tells us what purchase orders ought to look like, how to put out quotations, and you're going to see a couple of those on our agenda. We're going to talk about tonight on the agenda, putting out things to bid and requests for proposal or competitive contracting, as the case may be. Our business office, led by our Assistant Business Administrator, Mrs. Sylvia, is, performs a daily and very detailed review of all of the purchasing requests before they get to me. And the business office also prepares a purchasing manual for use by all of our managers and our staff. And just a couple of weeks ago, we had our annual purchasing training, which I conducted for all of our staff who are involved in the purchasing process, and we had that in the auditorium, the high school. So line item transfers, I say this all the time, and I'll skip over the law. Two things about budgeting. Fact number one, budgets are plans, and we talked about that. In fact, number two, right on the heels of fact number one, plans change all the time. The budget, just like our own lives, right? We make the best laid plans, and low and behold, something changes. That is budgeting in a nutshell. That is budget management in a nutshell. And when things change, money needs to move, and that is what you see on the transfer process all again, guided by the law and the statutes. Mr. Lidle, please. The list of bills, again, every board meeting required by law, the expenditure of funds has to be reported publicly, and there is an audit of payment of claims by the business office and by me every single month. So we'll go through, Mr. Lidle, the process for payment of bills. It's very important, and you can't skip a step, and you can't go through the steps out of order. So we appropriate money, which means we set it aside for a specific item. We encumber it. We lock it up through the purchase order process. We encumber it, we lock it up through the purchase order process. This is a legal commitment on the board's case. We spend the money, we create the list of bills, and we put those bills on the board agenda. And tomorrow, we will pay the bills that we approved this evening. Mr. Lidle? And as I do, I want to offer a list of bills to go through that the board is going to approve tonight. It's available to the public. And if you look at this presentation, which will be on our website tomorrow, you can click that URL there, and you will go straight to the full September list of bills, which was approved at our last meeting. And you could see, it really is intuitive. Who are we paying? What is the purchase order we're paying? What is the description and account of the item? Are there any other notes? And how much is that payment? Very specific alphabetical order by regular payments and purchase orders. And then at the end, there are some wire transfers, which we have when we have to pay things like our debt service. So if you're interested and you can't fall asleep one night, take your computer, click on the link, you'll be asleep in no time. The next thing, Mr. Lidle, S seventeen oh one, that's a legal term for financial statements. The Board of Education is no different than any other business, and our business is kids, let's be clear about that. They consist of the report of the board secretary, the report of the treasurer of school monies, who reconciles cash accounts to the general ledger. And then everything that happens in S seventeen oh one culminates in reconciling everything, all the reports together. So again, the next slide, Mr. Lidle, is the same thing. This is the very first page of the September list of bills. Well, it looks like the August one, but the September, this should be the September list of bills. As you click on seventeen oh one reporting, again, you'll be able to see the full report. There is a set of financial statements. There is a balance sheet, which presents our assets, which is what we own, our liabilities, which is what we owe, and our fund balance, which is our net worth or equity that we have. And then it also shows an income statement or a profit and loss statement, which shows our revenues for that month, as well as our expenditures in detail. So there is a set of balance sheet and finance and profit and loss statements for every one of our major funds, which is Fund Ten, our major operating fund, Fund Twenty, our grants, and Fund Forty, which is our debt service. And cash flow. It is super important to analyze cash flow to maintain liquidity, solvency, and flexibility. I'll talk about it in a little bit more detail in a couple of slides, but this board has taken major steps to respond to changes in the rules and the regs and what we can and can't do as a board over the last few years to really improve liquidity and solvency and flexibility, which makes my job a lot easier when they allow us to do those things. Discussions. The budget is not cast in stone. It is, as I said before, when we spoke about line item transfers, it is critical that we talk to budget managers, the principals, the directors of departments within our district every month, and especially more frequently during the creation of the budget, which we've done. We just met with, Mr. Zelinski and I met with all of the budget managers in the past few weeks, and we spoke about plans for the future. We also took the opportunity to talk about what's happening this year. Were the goals they're setting, are they finding that they're achievable? Or is there another direction that we need to take? And those discussions are extremely helpful to us at Central Office, as well as to the department budget managers. So there are annual reviews, and I spoke about the next one, the annual audit. Statute requires that, in general, accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, and the Office of Federal Budget Management requires that every single year, a public school district in the state of New Jersey undergoes a full audit by a licensed public school accountant. Ours is home in Freny, right here in town, and they do an excellent job. It is all regulated by an audit program, which is given to us by the Department of Education, and it culminates in what's called a comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR, which is our set of financial statements that's several hundred pages long. Mr. Connady, one of the partners who was on our engagement, will come, as I said, to the December board meeting to talk to everyone about the results of the audit that we just completed for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. The next slide is new and is what I was referring to earlier in my comments. Standard and Poor's, if you have picked up the Wall Street Journal or any financial newspaper, you will have heard of Standard and Poor's. They're not a local entity, they're not a state entity, they are not even a national entity. They are global entity who periodically evaluates and rates the financial position and the debt of business entities, including school districts periodically. Our last review was twenty sixteen. In the report we just received in June twenty twenty-one, this is where I have to stop and give the board a tremendous amount of credit. Because of the decisions that they have made, our debt rating was upgraded from A to A plus. That's a big deal, and that enables us to be better rated. And if we ever had to, and we don't want to have to, but if we ever had to borrow money, we would get the best rates available because of that rating. Just a couple of comments, which SMP, as we call them, made in the report. They say that the district and the board has worked on ensuring fiscal stability and maintaining balanced budgets, benefiting from the conservative practices and stronger expenditure oversight. That's all the credit to how the board runs our district and helps us run our district. Highlights include the zero-based budgeting practices, coupled with what we're talking about tonight, monitoring and reporting of budget amounts to actuals. And since the last review, the district has seen improved financial operations, closing each year with healthy surpluses and increasing reserves to strong levels. Again, and I can't say this enough, I, in my job, the decision that the boards have made in the past five to six years have really helped us stay the course and keep the ship of state afloat. So much appreciation to the board for allowing us to be strong in spite of all of the state cuts. So thank you so much. Next, and finally, as always, and I know I've said the word board so many times, but the board has a role in this, as they do in everything else. They hire the experts, they hire the business office staff, they hire the independent auditor, who, as I said, is a very good auditor. They do understand what we in Central Office use to manage the district budget. They review the financial reporting before it comes out to the public on the agenda. They review the annual audit, which they will do between now and the next time that we have our November meeting. And they remain informed on budgetary issues, which we do weekly and more frequently if we need to. Dr. Clark, that is all I have. I thank you for the time, I thank the board for the opportunity to make this presentation. And again, it will be available tomorrow at some point on our district website. But I'm not going to make Mr. Lidle navigate to it, you'll have to find it yourself. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeGeorge, and I just have a couple of more comments. Once again, congratulations to our unsung hero Sarah and our October Seniors of the Month, Cody and Sarah. As we continue our path to normalcy, we now turn our attention to upcoming events to include the National Honor Society induction ceremony. Really looking forward to that in person, next Thursday, October twenty-eighth, at six thirty in the Lacey Township High School auditorium. We are gearing up for the LTHS Fall Play, which this year will be Clue. And of course, all of the holiday concerts that we always look forward to. So these events and so many more can all be found on the district calendar, which is located on the district website. We've already had a couple of tours of that, and I implore you to look around. There's a lot of information on our website. Finally, as we conclude fall sports, I'd like to commend our student athletes and their coaches for a stellar fall season. We have had tremendous successes, and we look forward to see where our teams end up. And that concludes my comments, Board President McAvoy.
Thank you, Dr. Clark, and thank you, Mr. George, for that comprehensive slideshow that you just gave us, we appreciate it. Right now, we will transition to public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment shall raise his or her hand, and when called upon, state your name, address, or affiliation, and intention to make a statement. Comments shall be addressed to the board president. Comments shall be made on one issue at a time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes, after which time you will be muted to allow others a chance to speak. No audience member will be recognized twice until all who wish to comment have been recognized. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lidle.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. Anyone who'd like to comment at this time is instructed to virtually raise your hand using the Zoom app or Dall Star nine. If you're calling in via telephone, your Zoom app does need to be updated to at least five point seven point eight to speak. You'll be called to unmute your microphone and speak in turn. So it looks like our first public comment will be from Debbie Guber dot Smith. You may unmute your microphone and begin your public comment.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mrs. Smith.
I just have, I just have something that I wrote up that I wanted to read. While I understand that everyone needs to follow the necessary guidelines, I just would like to give you my perspective on it through firsthand experience. Again, this is not, you know, bashing the decisions that you have to make. I understand why, you know, that you have to follow the rules, but I just would like to give you a little bit of a perspective on my take on it. Last month, my daughter was forced to quarantine due to minimal exposure to a student that later tested positive. This absolutely devastated her. A perfectly healthy child was stuck trying to keep up in school virtually. She was denied her friends and social interactions. She was denied participating in school activities that she had been looking forward to, and she was forced to miss out on six field hockey games, a sport that gives her a tremendous feeling of accomplishment and pride. She wasn't even able to set foot on school property to watch the practices, even though she would have stayed far away from her teammates. Her teachers were truly amazing, but as amazing as they were, she still missed out on so much. Again, she did not have COVID, she had minimal exposure, and was perfectly healthy throughout the entire fourteen days. Parents are afraid to even say that their child has a stuffy nose these days. The nurse's office has always been a safe haven for the kids. Now they are afraid to even say that they do not feel well for fear of being forced to quarantine. They no longer feel free to turn to the nurses in their time of need. I emailed Dr. Clark, Mr. Zelinski, and Mr. Dowd on the eighth and again on the nineteenth. I would like the number of students that have tested positive for COVID after being forced into mandatory quarantine due to exposure at school. I would like to contact the New Jersey Department of Education, the New Jersey Department of Health, and the CDC regarding this matter. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith, we appreciate you and all that you do for the district. And we will make sure that Dr. Clark or Mr. Zelinski gets back to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will recognize Anthony Rizzoli. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Good evening, can you hear me again?
Yes, Mr. Rizzoli.
Okay, I hate to bore you, but.
That's okay.
First off, number seventeen tonight says that a non-resident tuition is seventy-five hundred dollars on your documents on the agenda. What is the actual average student cost? And why are we only charging seventy-five hundred dollars?
Mr. George, could you answer that question, please?
I'm gonna, if you could go on with your comments, I'm gonna look at our per-people cost for general ed students, and I'll get right back to you. I don't know off the top of my head, but I want to be right, so if you bear with me, I will get that for you.
Okay, can I continue my question, so my five minutes does?
Yes, please do, yes.
You just announced, the superintendent just announced that there are National Merit Scholars. I asked the question last time, but Mr. Zelinski, he was going to get back, he didn't get back to me. Tonight, our superintendent says there'll be a ceremony. Again, I ask, how many?
So, Mr. Zelinski, the ceremony is the National Honor Society. For the high school, that's different than the National Merit that you were talking about.
Great, and then how many National Merit Scholars do we have this year in Lacey? I'll ask again.
Mr. Zelinski, did you check into that?
We are not aware of any at this time. They, National Merit Scholars are based off of the PSAT that juniors take in their junior year of high school. In all of my time in Lacey, we probably had about one or two, because it is extremely competitive.
I know that, I was, my question was, I just don't understand how, and as I asked the question last time, a school district like Hillsborough, which is basically comparative to Lacey, size of the township, Republican run, you know, population, they have twenty, and we have none again. Is it that, you know, I keep bringing this up, that are you trying to hide things that are bad? Or is it just that you don't want to let the public know that there's mediocre academic performance in the Lacey school system? And that is something that the National Merit Scholar amounts kind of really reflects and points to, and should be hard, should be addressed, okay? Mediocre is not something that me as a taxpayer is willing to accept.
Mr. Rizzoli, the National Merit Scholarship Program is administered by the College Board, which is basically a not-for-profit company that colleges rely on because they're looking for colleges, they're looking for students who are of interest to them based on a standardized test. When I look at the seniors coming out of our high school, and I see the amount of four-year colleges that they're entering as compared to eighteen years ago when I entered here, that's the measure of success that we're looking for. When you're talking about companies that administer standardized tests, that is not a measure of any district and their achievements and how they're doing. Now, some people do believe that with respect to them. However, we've never aspired to that philosophy in Lacey. We've aspired, and we can point you to those numbers where we have flipped the script and where twenty years ago, sixty percent of our students would go to Osh County College. Now sixty percent of our students go to a four-year university or college. That's a big difference. That means we're not failing, that means that we are doing rather good, in my opinion, with respect, sir.
Again, you have yours, I have mine. The next thing I want to bring up is I sent an email on September twentieth to the Assistant Superintendent, and the question was simple. What are the regular start and end times for teachers and students at each school in the district? Is it on the website? And if it is, I can't find it, and I'd like to know where it is.
I'm not a hundred percent sure where it is on the website, all of our students are certainly aware. I will get back to you tomorrow. I apologize if I did not answer you, I thought I did. But as you can imagine, we've been a little bit busy, but.
My reason, my reasons are that I see the stipends that are being paid for extracurriculars. I don't understand how a teacher who is in a school that ends at a different time than another school ends up for an extracurricular and the times overlap. I don't understand how an employee cannot complete their obligation in one job to start, time start at another job. If there is a difference there based on the, all the agendas that are public record that I could see, then that tells me that somewhere, there has to be some kind of a problem with start times and extracurricular payments. And that brings to me from a management point of view. And that brings to me from man, from a management point of view. I know my five, five minutes is up. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, let me, it, while you, as you depart, let me answer your question for you um, that you asked. I appreciate your question. It is. Yes, so uh, in grades pre-K and K thirteen, nine, uh, grades one to five, fifteen, eight. Grade six to eight, fifteen, nine, and grades nine to twelve, sixteen, five. Those are all from our twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, approved, twenty-two, twenty-three, rather approved budget. One, sorry, twenty-one, twenty-two approved budget. Uh, and I will say this about that as I always do. They are estimates based upon historical information and they don't necessarily translate into a actual cost for these types of students because uh, we consider this as extra revenue, which we would not have had if we uh, we did not accept these students from out of district. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. George, and thank you, Mr. Rizzoli. And Mr. Zalinski can get back to you with the start times and where it will be on the website. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will recognize Peter Curatolo. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Yes, this is Peter Curatolo, four twenty-one Brandywine Avenue, Forkett River, New Jersey. Uh, and in uh, full disclosure, I am currently serving as the mayor of Lacey Township. I first want to thank the, the Board, Board President McAvoy, uh, and Superintendent Clark. Uh, Assistant Superintendent Zalinski, distinguished members of the Board for giving me a short opportunity to speak. Uh, I respect your autonomy as a board and as elected officials and respected people in our community. Uh, but I do come to you tonight uh, to uh, bring up a singular issue uh, that is very important. And I ask for you to um, reach out to your families and educate them on this. And I want to be clear, and I'm, I'm speaking specifically uh, to a ballot question that is on the ballot. It's on a question form uh, on referendum this year, and it is specifically to buy, excuse me, to sell recreational marijuana and to grow recreational marijuana in our town. And that's very different uh, from the uh, state's uh, definition uh, that was passed uh, in our town and in many towns uh, some months ago. This is to actually grow it here and sell it here. Currently, we would be one of uh, three municipalities out of thirty-three municipalities. I want to be clear with another distinction. Not speaking negatively about the product or legitimate business that wants to sell it. It has nothing at all to do with medical marijuana, which is prescribed by a physician. Uh, so there's a clear distinction in those items. I'm speaking simply from a policy perspective. To put some of that into perspective here this evening. Marijuana-related traffic deaths, and we, we do look at and use uh, Colorado as somewhat of a measuring stick. Captain Shellhammer from Colorado flew over here and educated a lot of our elected officials, our police chief, our county sheriff, and some of our then-freeholders, now commissioners. Since twenty-twelve, marijuana-related traffic deaths in Colorado is up a hundred and fifty-one percent. Marijuana-related hospitalizations is up a hundred and forty-eight percent, twenty-twelve to twenty-sixteen. I could go on and on, but I won't glaze people over with statistics. I ask you a couple of simple questions. How does this make our town better? How is this a value add for our kids, our seniors, and everyone in between? How is it good public health or public safety policy? Uh, these are critical questions. This ballot question, this question is on the ballot. If you're a concerned student, a teacher, a parent, a coach, uh, I need you to ed- educate yourself. I'm not going to tell you what to do, but I will go to the foot of the cross to defend your right to choose what to do. Uh, I urge you to reach out to Chief DeBella. Chief DeBella has, has been in law enforcement thirty years. He's concerned about violent crime. I encourage you to con- contact him for his thoughts. Uh, there's two final things I'd like to talk about. People talk about revenue, and it's the magic bullet for revenue. Well, in most of the jurisdictions and states where recreational marijuana has been enacted, it's been exactly the opposite. It has increased the rest, has increased DUIs, um, and it has increased treatment facility admissions. So on two million dollars, two percent of two millions, twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand bucks would pay for overtime for about a month for our police force. Uh, none of that would reach the schools. Uh, currently, in the Colorado budget, nine tenths of one percent of the budget uh, revenue is derived uh, from the sale of recreational marijuana. So I want people to think deeply about this. Currently today, as we're speaking here this evening, property values in Lacey Township are at an all-time high. We've worked very, very hard. Our police department, our municipal alliance, all of you who have for many years, long before I ever held a po- uh, political title, have let me speak, you know, my career is public health. You let me speak in that high school. You've always welcomed me. I'm very, very grateful for that. Uh, and I know that that, that good relationship will continue because I certainly believe in education and I know the value that you put out there. So I'm asking you to contact your parents. You, you have a direct line to the parents. It's in, it's really incredibly important. The other thing I want to just close with is gang activity. Virtually everywhere where recreational marijuana is sold because of the onerous taxes placed on this product by their respective states. Gangs do come in, they don't have to charge excessive tax on it. They come in and they undershoot and they undercut. That increases gang activity. These are all concerns of our police force. Many stakeholders in our community and in our county have either passed resolutions against this, spoke out against this from, again, a purely policy perspective. I come to you hat in hand tonight, asking for your help. Yes, I'm your mayor. Yes, I've earned the title, but I am one vote. I need your help. This is not, and I repeat, this is not a political issue. It's something I need your help with. Coaches, teachers, parents, schools. You can still do it. Not gonna uh, micromanage people's behavior. People want to do it and it's legal. Have at it. I just am simply saying, I don't think it's good public health or public safety policy to have it sold here with our wonderful Parkway access. I do not want us to become a destination for pot tourism. I want us to be known for other things, things that we've earned because of the hard work that you've all done and that the parents and the coaches and the teachers and our hard-working businesses have all done. I close my comment with this. I ask you for your help. It is important. Please share this, spread it, use Facebook, social media, whatever you can. Um, again, I ask and appeal to you all uh, for your help, and I thank you for the good job that you do. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Curatolo.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Richard Bidnick. Please unmute your microphone, state your name and address, and begin your public comment.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, Richard Bidnick, Forkett River. The thirty-minute delay in this meeting tonight was very unprofessional. To keep the public waiting on a Zoom call was disgraceful. Let's get this straight. It's because of this board that this meeting is virtual, not the public's. Mr. George, while you're at it, why don't you consult with the public about the budget since they are the ones who have to pay for it and get their input for once? Um, I'm going to read an email that I sent to the Board President that was never accurately responded to. I want the public to hear what I have to say about this. It was sent on September twenty-first. Dear Mrs. McAvoy, it was brought to my attention by other citizens that after the public comment section of the school board meeting held virtually on September twentieth, that Mr. Polino made personal and derogatory comments about me and other members of the public. Need I say that it is not only unethical, but extremely unprofessional for a member of this board to make personal attacks at a public meeting of any member of the public? Mr. Polino, I might add, is supposed to be representing his constituents, not attacking them. I personally did not watch the meeting part, but I do know from several accounts that he brought up issues which have nothing at all to do with the school board or the current issues that are in front of this board in our community as a whole. I also understand that you, as Board President and Chair, did nothing to stop him. This is exactly the reason why this entire board needs to resign. You, as Board President, cannot even control the meetings, and this again is another very sad episode in our school board's history. As a member of the public, I have every right to critique this performance of this board and administration. My comments are not of personal nature because I do not know anyone on this board personally. In fact, on several occasions, I have expressed to this board before I even made my public comments. I expect a public apology from you and this board immediately. It is the duty of the chair to control the meetings, even if you don't like the message or the messenger. The board continues to slip into the abyss, dragging the entire school board system down with it. Sincerely, Richard Bidnick. I got a response from Mrs. McAvoy, and this was her response. Mr. Bidnick, thank you. We always appreciate comments from the public, either in person or through email. She didn't even bother to sign it. I have a problem with this. You, Mrs. McAvoy, are an educator. You should be able to respond in an email with even signing your name. This just shows another unprofessional aspect of this board and the way it conducts its business. It's not the purpose of any sitting board member to question the motives of any taxpayer whatsoever. But I will tell Mr. Polino something that I have said over and over again over the years. The school district, in my opinion, is fiscally irresponsible and has done the public a total disservice with the poor quality of education it has delivered. I want the best education possible for our students for the buck. I know this can be achieved with drive, determination, and focus, something totally lacking with this board and administration. In fact, I blame this board for all of the ails of this school district. Having four educators sitting on this board is also a large part of the problem. They can't even see the forest between the trees. Now, I sent a second email, which I never received a response on. Dear Mrs. McAvoy and Dr. Clark, last week, I attended virtually the press conference dealing with the lawsuit concerning the unlawful masking of individuals in our schools. The information Mr. Affrin supplies is something that all of you need to hear. I asked very pointed questions, especially dealing with issues concerning our own school district. I like to know as a taxpayer, why our school district has not signed on to this lawsuit? And I sent the link to the meeting and I told them exactly where to listen to the questions and asked that every board member um, view this. The quarantine of the students that you are doing is technically illegal. You're not even medical professionals. And besides, the lawyer you are using is not a constitutional expert. Using him on these issues is like asking a dermatologist to consult on a brain surgery. Where is the logic? I mean, besides being weak and pathetic and laughable, you don't even want to have to deal with your constituents in person. That is how much you loathe the public you were elected to serve. May I remind you all that you are just public servants, servants to the people you represent.
Mr. Bidnick, uh, five minutes is up. I'm so sorry.
I'm done. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bidnick, as a public servant, thank you for your comments. Mr. Lidle, anyone else?
Seeing none at this time, Mrs. McAvoy.
Thank you. That will close public comment. At this time, we will go into committee reports. So if the chair people are ready for committee reports, um, Mr. Peters, could you please present policy? Mr. Peters, you're muted, please.
I'm sorry, how's that? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, awesome. Thank you so much. Uh, went to October thirteenth, we had our board policy meeting. Myself, Ms. Claus, Mr. Senza, Dr. Clark, Mrs. Zalinski attended. We spoke about uh, twenty-two hundred, which is curriculum content. We spoke about two, four, six, seven surrogate parents and resource family parents. We spoke about five, one, 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 eligibility, I'm sorry, eligibility of resident, non-resident students. We spoke about six, three, one, one contracts for goods and services funded by federal grants, which was revised. We spoke about eat four, two, oh, emergency crisis and situations. We spoke about the revised eat four, two, oh, point, oh, one. And we spoke about eat five, five, zero meal charges outstanding food services bill, which also was revised. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Peters. Next, we will have Mrs. Downing with the curriculum report.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. Um, curriculum met on October twelfth, Tuesday, October twelfth, at six o'clock at the board office. In attendance was Donna McAvoy, Frank Polino, myself, Dr. Clark, and Mr. Zalinski. Um, the meeting lasted for close to an hour and a half. We talked about Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Uh, Dr. Clark informed us that the Big Brothers and Big Sisters program will once again be implemented at both Milk Pond School and Lacey Township High School. Um, SAC, our SAC counselor, Kelly Brown, will lead that program. We talked about the strategic plan. Um, we, all board members got a copy of the strategic plan. And in it was the proposed district and superintendent goals for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And these goals were presented at the October twenty-first board meeting. Um, we will be approving that, I believe, on page twenty-three or page nine, number twenty-three in our agenda. Mr. Zalinski led a discussion on two topics related to the Lacey Township High School Guidance Department. Uh, we are approving tonight a new counselor um, for a co- a college and career counselor. That's on page thirteen, and he talked about the school profile, um, improving that and updating that. We also talked about, uh, Mrs. Nemick came over and presented Google Slide presentation on supporting um, social emotional learning, and uh, we talked about uh, what Dr. Clark spoke about tonight. Uh, the trunk retreat night um, at the high school. It's going to be the parent university, and we hope that all of you can attend. Um, as part of my board comment, I was talking about how it's so nice to see things coming back to normal or somewhat normal, and this is one of them, trunk retreat. Um, I hope you can all attend and bring your children with you. Uh, good news, the uh, Dr. Clark shared the great news that the United, a unified champion school grant was extended. So the district was awarded eight thousand five hundred dollars, which is broken down as the high school getting thirty-five hundred, middle school two thousand, and the elementary school seven fifty each. On, and that is it for curriculum. Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy.
Thank you. Next, we will have facilities and finance by Mr. Scanlon.
Uh, thank you, uh, President McAvoy. Uh, quick, uh, just a quick uh, uh, in addition to that, though, quick negotiations update. Just let everyone know that the negotiations committee, the LTA, are continuing to meet and we're working toward bridging the divide in our proposals in search of a new, um, you know, just in search of a new contract. We are continuing to work, and uh, when there's any news to be given, I will give it. We're uh, searching for a new facilities manager. It's underway. Um, and uh, that's an ongoing process. There are a number of applications and they're winnowing it down to the point where they'll get to interviews. I want to thank Mr. George for his presentation on the budget process. It's always very helpful when people know what's going on. Uh, as far as facilities go, the Life Skills Room, uh, which was a renovation prog- uh, project um, is nearing completion and it should be in use in November, actually, within the next week or two. Project is nearing completion and it should be in use in November, actually within the next week or two. The Milpon School and Forkett River School both suffered some water damage and insurance claims have been settled. Remediative work is beginning promptly. Milpon involves replacing cabinetry. Cabin trick, cap, cabinets. And the damage in the Forkett River School involved the library, and these things are being remediated. And I'll have more when you ask for comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. At this time, we will have spotlight on graduates. This is a time where board members take turns honoring Lacy Township High School graduates. And tonight is my turn. I would like to honor Alexandra Hansen from the class of two thousand ten. Lieutenant Alexandra Hansen attended Catholic University of America in Washington, DC. On a Navy ROTC scholarship, she earned the Bachelor of Science in Nursing. Upon graduation, she commissioned as an RN in the US Navy Nursing Corps. She has been assigned to Walter Reed National Military Medical Center, US Naval Hospital Guam. And was selected to serve on Fleet Surgical Team Two. She has been deployed to Afghanistan, the Fifth Fleet embarking USS Karnasaj. The USA, the USS WASP and the USS New York, along with completing COVID nineteen humanitarian missions. Currently, she is pursuing her doctorate nurse practitioner, anesthesiologist degree. At the Uniformed Services University of Health Sciences. Alexandra, we're so proud of you and all your accomplishments. Next, we have Dylan Emmett. He graduated from Lacy Township High School in two thousand fifteen. Currently, after graduation, Dylan enlisted in the US Marines as a machine gunner. His first deployment was to Syria where he spent six months. His last deployment was to Okinawa. After serving a little over four years and achieving the rank as sergeant, he was honorably discharged. The day after he returned, he began attending Ocean County College. While attending college, he was hired as a Class Two Police Officer for the Cape May Police Department. He attended the Police Academy for three months while pursuing his associate's degree. He spent one season in Cape May and then was hired by the Lacy Township Police Department. As a special wall enforcement officer, where he served for lot, nine months. And recently, Dylan was sworn in as a full-time Lacy Township Police Officer. We're very proud of you, Dylan. Keep up the great work. And next month, we will have some reports from Mrs. Downing, and in December, Mr. Peters will honor some recent graduates. Next, we will go on to board comments. We will start with Mrs. Claus, please.
Sure. Good evening. I got the call, the majority of the board opted to hold this meeting online to avoid non-mask wearers that could possibly shut the meeting down like last month. I say possibly because we don't know the outcome. We could assume because we were told of their intentions, but we will never know. I feel sorry for the kids that were supposed to receive their Students of the Month awards tonight in person. This is their time, and we took that from them. We also took away the opportunity to all residents in Lacy to attend the meeting in person. Which has been done since this district has opened, with the exception of shutting for COVID. Do I think the last few meetings have been acceptable? Absolutely not. I know this board and administration works hard for this district and does not deserve the mudslinging. But by us sitting at home, it looks like we are a group that runs from adversity. The non-mask wearers did not take anything from the kids tonight. We did. This meeting is held out of our convenience, convenience for ourselves, not the public. We have been told that they can have a special night for students in December sometime, but who's to say that will go as planned? The kids deserve normalcy. I expressed my feelings to most of the board members, as well as the board president, Mrs. McAvoy. How I think we should have this in person. Her response, say it in your public comments, so I am. And I was met with similar general responses. It'll be shut down anyway, so let's make this virtual. Not once did I hear, we are in fear or have been threatened. We have a policy one sixty-four point six that clearly outlines three reasons to allow us, allow us to move this meeting virtual. Did me, did we meet those requirements, or did we violate this policy by not even showing up? A few years back, when my husband was on the board, there was an extremely controversial issue. He was getting personal death threats in person, on the phone, and emailed to him for about three months. Some things included, you should be hung in the middle of town for people to watch. You should kill yourself. And be drawn and quartered. Not once did they have this meeting virtual. Although very stressful, they stuck it out and faced the community. If there was a time to go virtual, it was then. This in no way compares. I want to be clear, I am a hundred percent not in favor of having this meeting tonight virtual. Unless we are in danger, which we are not, or shut down due to COVID, which we are not, our schools in full session, and there was just a mommy-son bingo event. We should be in school in person. If the community wants to shut us down because they are violating our policy, then that's on them. But tonight is on us. We didn't even try. I also requested most, multiple times this month and last to hold meetings in an alternate location that does not require masks. Like town hall or outdoors, as I always, and I was always met with the same answer, no. So why did we have a tele? I've meet the candidate outside on the football field, more mixed messages. Something needs to change. I completely understand this is not the popular opinion of the board, and it might be upsetting some people I respect on the board. But if you know me, you know I believe in fairness, honesty, strong work ethic, and most importantly, accountability. I can say some of these things were not met tonight. I would just like to finish with one thing. Two nights ago, I attended a freshman parent guidance meeting in the media center. Out of about seventy parents, a few came unmasked. The Guidance Department asked politely to come to the front for a mask if they did not have one. They handled it beautifully. I also will leave you with this. We are expecting our staff to be on the front line with this exact issue we face at our board meetings. During indoor games, out, indoor events, and parent meetings, we should be standing with them to show we support our staff. Opting to sit home does not show that. If I see it, you bet they do too. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. De Senza, please.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. One more time, I'm going to ask for the document that has been denied to myself and Mrs. Claus since August when I first discovered it existed. I want to remind the board and Mr. Padula that there is no written district policy or bylaw prohibiting all of us from receiving it. And that no one board member should have such materials without the entire board being allowed to have it. I do not wish to discuss the contents. I'd like to read it and possibly say, I told you so. As I've mentioned, I have two of the same previous documents, and there were no limits or restrictions on it then, and there shouldn't be any now. I'm so beyond disappointed at the haphazard manner in which this board operates. No committee, no chairperson, and no board president has any power to deny a document to a fellow board member that is fully entitled to see it. As long as we are unconflicted. Our board attorney has gone beyond cautious in denying access to it. The New Jersey School Board Association will not get involved, even though they wrote and possess the original document. This particular document is not subject to Oprah. All the more reason to furnish it to a current sitting board member. I should not have to beg for it. This is a pitiful situation. Now, I'd like to congratulate our staff members of the month, who are long-term employees of the district, Ms. Karen Knapp and Katerina Orico. It was noted that Ms. Orico has thirty years of service with the Lacy School District in the cafeteria. That's a very long run. Congratulations, ladies. Congratulations to our senior students of the month, Cody Besser and Sarah Kuzan, and the unsung hero, Sarah Fester. Great job by all. I hope that some of these students run for president someday, or better still, try to become Lacy board members. I would love to see this board in the hands of students. Please, if you are eighteen and remain in the township, consider running next year. Three seats will be open. I gave information last month about how to become a candidate and my phone number, six oh nine, two nine oh, five one two five. I'm not shy. If anyone is interested in becoming a board member, it's easy to become a candidate. I have lots of training materials to lend. Last year, I became a New Jersey School Board Association Certified Board Leader by meeting all the training requirements for the Board Member Academy. And in May twenty nineteen, after I rejoined the board, I had qualified for master board member. Mrs. McAvoy has just recently achieved the master board member level. Congratulations. Now you know how much time was involved to achieve that goal. The current district enrollment is approximately three thousand nine hundred and fifty-three. Please see the superintendent report for details. Did everyone follow about the budget PowerPoint this month and last month? I'd like to thank Mr. De George for his budget presentations. The property tax levy for Lacy Township has now reached fifty-one million for the school tax. I've been on this board for six years, and I only voted for one budget that was the most level budget ever presented in many years. Generally, the school budgets have stretched the taxpayers to the max while enrollment declines. In October two thousand five, I received a report from Dr. Anthony. That stated enrollment in Lacy was five thousand five students. Today, this district stands at thirty-nine fifty-three. I understand that expenses and salaries go up, but the people who are asking this district to install. And then continually upkeep and pay for air conditioning in all seven buildings. Six schools plus the district office is simply unrealistic. The monthly charges for the additional electricity alone would be astronomical. Don't say, oh, there are solar panels. They will soon be at the end of their twenty-year projected useful life. And from there on out, the system is on a wing and a prayer. It's anyone's guess how long they will continue their current rate of production. After the twenty years elapsed. If you don't believe me, do an open public records request for the electric bills. I've been reading them for over ten years now. You can easily see which schools have some air conditioning and which ones don't. Parents, you want control over this board, then run for these seats. Stop telling us what to do, when to do it, how to do it, and to step down. Run yourself. I don't appreciate people telling me how to vote. Break my oath of office, and I can promise you, no one on this board is going to be the state test case against the governor. There are five hundred and sixty-five school districts in the state of New Jersey. So far, I don't see the boards challenging the executive order. Last Thursday night, I attended in person the Ocean County School Board Meeting in Little Lake Harbor. There was an excellent presentation by Melanie Patterson, the Ocean Gate Superintendent, titled Reflections of Reopening the Schools. Ocean Gate is a very small district, and they actually conducted some of their meetings on the beach during the summer to be outdoors during the pandemic. Making the decision to be virtual and remote tonight was difficult, and I really feel we should not have had to do it. We cannot just ignore non-compliant audiences. I have no time for planning to be at double meetings if we needed to adjourn. I am a Navy mom now. My son is coming home on leave this Saturday, and we will be traveling to visit relatives. I was not tuning into a virtual meeting while visiting relatives. I already had to do it once this year. I'm sorry, but I will not continue to inconvenience myself. This summer, I even cut my vacation short a week to return home for the in-person August meeting. And normally, I would not alter my personal plans to attend these meetings, but my vote was needed for a particular item, and I felt that was important. I was also harassed about the September meeting adjournment. We can adjourn a meeting anytime we need to, as long as there are motion, a second, and a vote in favor. Our next business meeting will be held hopefully in person on Thursday, November eighteenth. And the accountant will have the overall rundown on the annual audit. Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Mr. Peters.
Thank you, President McAvoy. I want to be short and sweet. Number one, Dr. Clark mentioned some, some sports. Measurements that we, we've gained. We got boy soccer coach Tori, girl soccer, Mr. Mohar, football coach Rosillo, tennis Mr. Ryder. All Class D South champions. Congratulations, guys and coaches on the hard work. So, Mr. Bidnick. You made a statement tonight regarding forest beyond the trees. Do me a favor, Mr. Bidnick, come out of the trees. Come out of the forest. You talk about public being involved. Everything calls strategic planning. It's a meeting that the public come to and help the district work harder. Have not seen you there. Come out. You want to help out? Give us some help. Mr. Rizzoli, you spoke about. Colleges and money and financing, and you brought up Hillsborough. And during this meeting, I was able to grab my phone real quick, and I Googled the taxes real quick for Hillsborough. Hillsborough taxes, the average person in Hillsborough pays nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars a year. While Lacy, we're just over, almost just short of six thousand dollars, five thousand eight hundred dollars. If you want to see taxes double and cough up the money so we can hire more teachers to lower the percentage of students per class. And hire more teachers and hire more administrators, we're not about that. We're dealing what we can with. With the money that we have, we're doing the best possible job we can. You heard Mr. De George in his announcement that we're an A-plus rating. There's a reason for that. So we're working hard on that. Teachers, custodians, bus drivers, people working the kitchen administrators. You know, a lot of people as we're talking and saying, you know, how tough it is and this and that, and the whole line of words. Well, Mr. Rizzoli, you made a comment about four people being on the board involved in education. Well, I'll tell you what, I think we're best for that board, because me as an educator and being on the board. I'm seeing what every other administrator, teacher, and everybody's going through in this district. There's a new term out now. It's called June tired. And what June tired is, at the end of the school year, when you're a teacher and exhausted every amount of energy to finish out that year, giving final exams and that. Teachers are feeling that now in October. Wearing a mask eight hours a day, trying to teach, trying to communicate with the students as best as possible. Do me a favor, Mr. Bidnick, wear a mask eight hours a day and talk with somebody and see what it's like at the end of the day. It's a tough road, whole, road to hoe, and I thank the teachers. I thank the administrators. I thank the bus drivers. When I'm driving down the road and I see this big bus coming down the road, and here's a bus driver wearing a mask, trying to control everything and take care of everything, and. I appreciate you guys for what you do. As far as the meeting, yes, I also felt that it should have been a person, and we should have held the people accountable that told us. They were coming to the meeting without a mask and told us we were doing that. And what I didn't want to see was the fact these people walking in without a mask, and then the meeting coming adjourned. And never becoming upset in front of the students. It's not fair to them. I've always used the slogan, students come first. And so, yes, I did agree to virtual. I wanted a person. And I wanted the people coming into the meeting without a mask to be held accountable for their actions. Thank you very much, Mrs. McAvoy. That is it.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Next, we'll have Mr. Scanlon, please.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. I'd like, first of all, congratulate the seniors of the month, Cody Besser and Sarah Kuzan. And also, I'd like to. Congratulate the unsung hero. Also. Sarah, I said, I'm, I'm sorry, I said Susan Kuzan, Sarah Kuzan, my, my mistake. And thank you to Mason Heck and Alexis Frezey for your reports. It's always nice to hear from the students. I'm glad, even though we can't be, or that we weren't in person, I'm glad that you were able to take part in the meeting. The other thing, a couple of things have come up that I, I just. Don't want to get into a back and forth with other board members. I, I understand completely, and my preference always would be to have meetings in person. But I don't really think that. Somehow, I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair to the administrators. I don't think it's fair to board members. I don't think it's fair to our budget. We have to pay professionals to come twice. Just because a handful of people, or however many people it may be, are going to make it an issue and a spectacle out of not wearing a mask. And, and then ridiculing us and making comments to us on their way out. I didn't get elected to be ridiculed by people and be put in a position where I really can't answer. Because, you know, one person's ridiculing me while another person's videotaping, waiting for me to say just the wrong thing. So I can be the next Facebook post. And that's my reason. I just. I, I will just go so far, and then I'm going to say the wrong thing, and I'll be the person who's wrong. Never, never the person who baited you. Sort of like football. You don't see the first guy. They always see the guy who responds to it. And then, as far as any information that has come, any information that comes to us for negotiation stays. And then, as far as any information that has come, any information that comes to us for negotiation stays with negotiations. And, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Regina, that you feel the way you do, but, um, if you can get a ruling that tells me I have to give it to you, I will. But it basically was a simple piece of material to guide us. And when negotiations are over, I'll share.
It's always been given to the whole board.
Excuse me, Mrs. McAvoy, could I continue to talk?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, and if you wanna have this discussion, I don't think it would be good in public. I think we should have it privately. But I just, as I, as I tried to say when you were interrupting me, is that as soon as it no longer becomes a matter of confidentiality, I'll show you exactly what it was. Okay, thank you. And thank you for your, my opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mrs. Downing, your comments, please.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. I'd like to start off with congratulating Cody and Sarah on being, uh, Students of the Month. Uh, both of them are outstanding students and I know they're gonna be successful. I don't know them personally, but just listening to their biography is, I guess I would call it, uh, great students. Uh, unsung hero, Sarah, congratulations. As I've said almost every meeting, um, that is my favorite award because that goes to the students that are doing, helping and behind the scenes doing everything and a lot of times you don't get the accolades, uh, but you don't care because you're there to do and help. And so, congratulations. Uh, I did already speak about the parent university. Uh, just a reminder, it's gonna be at Lacey Township High School from four-thirty to six-thirty. Uh, trunk or treat. I wanna congratulate all the summer readers. Um, and I know they received, um, I think it's Dr. Clark said a gift card. And one, uh, student from each of the schools won a tablet. But just the fact that they read so many hours over the summer or books over the summer is fantastic because as a first grade teacher for so many years, it's so important to read every single night. And to know that they're doing this over the summer without school reminding them to do it, um, is a great thing. So congratulations to all of you. Uh, no matter how many books you read, if you even read one, congratulations. Um, fire prevention, I wanna, uh, thank the fire companies. I know La Noca Harbor Fire Company, according to, uh, the, um, doctor, the superintendent's report. Uh, La Noca had, uh, John Sfransky doing a fire prevention presentation. John's been around for years doing that and I wanna thank him for continuing to do it. And Fork River Fire Company was at Fork River School. Uh, Chief Mozel, I hope I said your last name correctly, a firefighter Castellani, thank you so much for presenting that to the students. That Fire Prevention Week presentation is so important. They learn so much from that. And oftentimes, you'll see on the news where young kids have saved their families because of something they learned in those presentations. So thank you. Uh, Dr. Clark already mentioned the covers of our superintendent's meeting and our board meeting. Both Anna Anika and Abigail, wonderful artists. I wish I had half their talent. And also during, uh, ironically during this month, we had a week of respect. And different schools have been doing lessons on respect and being kind to each other, respectful of their opinions and their ideas. I think some of us could learn from that. Um, staff members of the month. Wow, that, you know, as, uh, Mr. Brandis was talking and saying that one person in there was the staff of the month, staff member of the month. Katerina was there wiping the counter, like it was a little dirty, she, she thought, and she's cleaning, not even realizing she was gonna be the staff member of the month. And Karen, great job as a parent. I've heard a lot about you and um, obviously, it's true because you are now staff of the month for October. Um, let's see, what else? I wanna thank Mason and Alexis for being here tonight and it's so nice to hear that the senior class is gonna have, or the homecoming dance is gonna be outside in the parking lot with the DJ and lights. Um, keep our fingers crossed it's not too cold. So, um, I hope you enjoy yourself. Thank you, Patrick, for your presentation. Um, as always, it's very insightful. As many years as I've been on the board, it's always good to have refreshers. Um, also, I, you know, I could talk about the meeting also. And I am one of the ones that Mrs. Claus called and I disagreed with her, um, for personal reasons. I also sat through the issue that her husband sat through sitting on the board. And that was a little different than this. Yes, it was tumultuous, definitely. But this, um, I agree with Mr. Scale and what he said about just trying to get through the meeting uh, with some respect and get to the business of it all. If we could all do what our students are learning to do, be respectful of each other, know that we all have differing opinions about this. Um, and some of us have an opinion about this, but believe that we have to follow the executive order. Uh, I think we could have a meeting and get our business done and still be respectful to listen to each other's ideas. Um, one more thing. I would just, once again, I just wanna thank everybody in this district. Bus drivers, cafeteria, teachers, administrators, custodians, everybody that works for the district. I wanna thank you for everything you do for the students to keep the schools clean and to keep our students in school because, oh my God, they need to be in school. Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy.
Mrs. Downing, I have nothing to say. You said everything I wanted to say.
Sorry, I don't usually talk that much.
Oh, my, so, uh, so real, also, I'll be so brief. What, everything Mrs. Downing said, thank you to the district staff, everyone who's going over and beyond for everything that they're doing with COVID. Um, personally, I substituted two days last week in my old district and I saw what each and every one of you is going through. And it was tough, wearing that mask for seven and a half hours and teaching and getting through to the students. So I totally understand what you're going through and we appreciate every single one of you. Mr., um, Peters said congratulations to all the teams at One B South. That's another thing I wanted to say. Congratulations to all the honorees tonight. We're so proud of you and we really are looking forward to presenting you the awards in person. To reiterate what Mrs. Downing, Mrs. De Senza, Mr. Scanlon and Mr. Peters said, I also chose to have the meeting virtually. I enjoy being on this board and I love advocating for all the students in the district. However, the abuse and the bullying that we put up with at that last meeting was unacceptable and disrespectful. It's not what we want to teach our students. And there were students there who saw us getting cursed at, us getting chanted at, us getting yelled at. This is not what we wanna show the students. So, yes, the majority of the board chose to go virtual. We don't think it's fair for the children. I, I don't know what else to say. It's just, it's not showing respect. It's weak of respect. We all need to show kindness and we want our children to learn to be respectful. The golden rule, treat others like you want to be treated. And we will try next month to have a re, uh, in-person meeting. However, if we have non-compliance, we will not be able to have the meeting. We are following the Governor's Executive Order two fifty-one. And that's what we will continue to do. So, yes, in November, we will come out on that Thursday night. We will open our meeting. However, if, like I said, if there's non-compliance, once again, we will end the meeting and we will have it virtual. So I hope everybody shows respect, thinks about children first. We want to have the meeting for the children. They deserve it. They deserve to be honored in person. And that's all I have to say. Board of Education, please look at your agendas. We will start to conduct business. Number one, meeting minutes. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call?
This is Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Next is the list of bills for October. Motion, please?
Motion.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
This is Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yeah, so abstain on A two.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. De Senza.
Yes, and one abstention, not for conflict on item number nine five oh one six six.
Thank you. Mrs. Downing.
Uh, yes, but I'm abstaining on bill number two zero three eight five zero due to conflict.
Thank you. Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Next is budget transfers. Number three, motion, please?
Motion, Peters.
Motion. I'll make the second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. We're moving on to items four to ten, the financial items. Motion, please?
Move. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yeah.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Moving on to items eleven to sixteen, which are facility items. Motion, please?
Motion, Peters.
A second? Mr. Scanlon, do you wanna be the second?
Second, yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Item seventeen to twenty-one, which are tuition and transportation items. Motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes, and note to number eighteen.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Item number twenty-two, the Title III Consortium. Motion, please?
Move.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Page nine, items twenty-three and twenty-four, policies and regulations. Motion, please?
Motion, Peters.
Is that also twenty-five, Donna?
No, Linda, um, just twenty-three and twenty-four.
Okay.
On page nine.
Correct.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry.
What's that, Mr. De George?
Who was the second? I did not catch it.
Mr. Scanlon was the second, you or Mrs. Downing?
Was not me.
Okay, Mr. Scanlon.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Next, items twenty-five to twenty-nine, the superintendent goals. And the health office, the nursing services, job descriptions, and the Lacey Township School District Emergency Virtual Remote Instruction Program, items twenty-five to twenty-nine. Can we have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? A roll call?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
One second. Um, Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Items thirty and thirty-one, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Next, we have letter B donations. And on behalf of the board, we thank everyone for their donations. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion. A second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes, and thank you very much. And I have to abstain on my own check.
Thank you. Mrs. Downing.
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. And letter C, programs and curriculum. Motion, please?
Motion. Second, whatever.
Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes, I have a quick question, though. For, um, under, we're on C, D, C and D, correct?
C.
Just C.
D.
Just C. We on just C, President McAvoy?
Yes, Mr. Peters.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Next, we're moving on to D, professional days and workshops. Motion, please?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Miss, go ahead.
The first item, which is the legal responsibilities and best practices. It says there, certified steps is district, it says various. But it has a number of five thousand one hundred dollars. How many people are attending this, this seminar? It just says various.
Dr. Clark?
Yes, uh, Mr. Peters, that's being held during faculty meetings at six different schools.
Okay.
So every staff, every teacher will be trained in that, Dr. Clark?
That is correct.
And that's not per session? That's total for all six schools? That price?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, roll call, please?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Uh, yes, but I have to stay in on Mr. Zalinski's, um, PD for NJA SA.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Next, we're moving on to E, certificated personnel. Numbers one to eighteen.
Move.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. De Senza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, and if I can, congratulations to Sherry Swain on her retirement effective next year.
Thank you. Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Non-certificated personnel, letter F, items one to six. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Would anybody like to, thank you, Mrs. De Senza. Any discussion? Second, anybody like to, thank you, Mrs. DeSenza. Any discussion?
I do have a, a comment slash revision to read on number three. Replacement position for Mrs. Dynak. It says fifty one thousand nine hundred dollars, but that really should be split into the following components. Fifty thousand dollar base salary, one thousand four hundred dollars in earned continuing education units. And five hundred dollars in longevity, and the minutes for this meeting reflect that breakout.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Mr. DeGeorge, at this time, I think we have two walk-on resolutions.
Yes, ma'am, we do. The first is this, approval of settlement agreement. And it reads, "Move that the Lacey Township Board of Education approve the settlement agreement with respect to the State of New Jersey Office of Administrative Law, docket number EDS zero five nine three seven dash two zero two zero S, as discussed in private session."
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Any second. Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes, and the second walk-on, please.
It is entitled termination of staff member, and it reads, "Move that the Lacey Township Board of Education approve the termination of staff member number eight five six five seven six, effective immediately." That is it.
Motion?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. At this time, we will adjourn the meeting. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.